Jacobs.
Here.
Lund.
Here.
Watts.
Allen.
Here.
Johnston.
Here.
Up for both minutes. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Adoption of the agenda? Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
And next we have the presentation for Shane Carroll.
I thought I would just move it back there. The Nancy Anderson Scholarship was established in 2001 in honor of city Nancy Anderson, who has been clerked for Warrensburg for over fifty years. The scholarship is intended for children of full-time degrees who wish to continue their education past high school. This year's the city received nine applications for the scholarship. The competition was tough. We had some excellent applications. Two members of the city council assisted in the selection of the recipient, Shane Carroll. He is the son of longtime employee Kirby Carroll and his mother is Lisa Carroll. So congratulations to Shane.
Okay, so I'm gonna, you're talking. I'm gonna talk for just a second about Shane and why he actually was selected for this. Shane has been involved with many extracurricular activities throughout high school. He was involved in student council, serving as the treasurer his senior year. He was part of the National Honor Society, serving as vice president of his class. In addition to his work at school, Shane worked with Adopt a Highway, helped with bake sales, took a senior mission trip, and was always there to help with school cleanups. Shane has been involved in 4H in numerous areas and voluntarily taught Bible school for seven years. Shane was still able to maintain a 4.370 grade point average. Shane is attending University of Central Missouri, working toward a degree in engineering technology. On behalf of the city of Warrensburg, I am pleased to present Shane with a check for a thousand dollars to help with his tuition at UCM. Okay. Up next, we have an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute on the municipal lease purchase agreement with US Bank Corp., Government Leasing and Finance Incorporated for the purchase of the 2018 Johnston Street Sweeper.
I'm not a member of the city council. During the budget process, council staff to include the budget to finance the new street sweeper for the work department. We received three quotes and US Bank offered the lowest interest rates with no associated fees. What you have in your packet is the lease purchase quote and the quoted price for the sweeper. The sweeper will not be paid for until delivery of the vehicle, which I think is anticipated to be March, is it?
March, April.
March, April of next year. So, are there any questions related to the purchase of the sweeper?
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to execute the municipal lease purchase agreement with US Bank Corp., Government Leasing and Finance Incorporated for the purchase of the 2018 Johnston Street Sweeper. This is for adoption objections.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Okay, up next, we have a discussion of arts commission requests from Gary Brinkley.
Thank you, Mayor. The council members, just the city manager, I appreciate the time to update you on the Arts Commission, Warrensburg Arts Commission. In our last meeting of September seventeenth, we had several agenda items which we thought we should advise the council. And some slight changes. You had previously approved our sculpture on loan program, which involved bringing in outside sculpture and having it on loan for a year. And the piece out of City Hall is one of those. In discussion with, in the process, Arts of the Rack created eight concrete pads for us, which saved us some money on the original budget. Six were planned for this past year. And when they were to install, one of the artists who had two sculptures that would be put in place was ill and could not deliver the sculpture. So we had two pads that were not filled for the past year. We discovered as it's coming up on time to have the pieces moved down, that there was an interest in seeing if we could acquire one or some of the pieces. And for the Arts of Other Places program for the permanent art collection for the city. And the piece that is in front of City Hall is available. And we are, we have gone to our finance committee and have suggested that we switch funds to $750 awards for the sculpture on loan, which is $1500, to go toward the purchase of this piece. And the total price would have been $1650. We saved money on the creation of the concrete pads, so we had ample funds within our budget. And this would, it helps with the note, we were shifting the sculpture on loan to Arts of Other Places, and so we'll have that piece as part of the permanent art collection. And for the present time, we are not planning to move it from its location. So with your consent, we will proceed. I guess we, we have it within our budget and we already approved that three-year budget for those funds, so we're just going to shift the funds in one line, I don't know if you can remember what our budget. The other thing with the sculpture on loan, we had some ongoing issues that the timing in September to take them out in October to install was not good. We were getting this back from the artist. So we looked at it and there could come a time that someone in the spring of the year or another period of time could come up with a piece when we would have a pad available. And so we are altering our sculpture on loan program. I don't know that you really need to vote on it. You did approve our sculpture on loan, but I wanted you to know that we were thinking of moving the date from a fixed date, as we had it in the past, to a flexible date, so that if a piece became available and we had both the monies and the place to display it, that we could proceed with it. And so that would be a slight change to what we presented to the council a little over a year ago on the sculpture on loan. And let's see. One other item that I think will be exciting news, hopefully. We had a suggestion that the Arts Commission, Warrensburg Arts Commission, considered a musical instrument to be put into the interactive, one of the interactive positions at one of the city parks. And we're looking at, and we had in our budget, the funds that we have approved, up to $9,000 for three to four musical pieces that will be selected and brought to the Arts Commission. And then we will advise the council. And we're island clear as to exactly which children's park or which park that we were going to install in. But I think that that will be an exciting thing for a long period of time. All I can remember, Tom Hanks in Ruby Big, walking or playing the piano, I forget who the other actor was, but that's one of the, something like that is one of the pieces that is being considered. So keep your ears open. We'll update you as soon as we have that. Any questions? Hopefully not, because I've expended all I know. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have acceptance of proposed temporary grading and construction easement from Keystone Development to work in the city right of here.
I'm mayor of the state council. The developer of this project is in part, he's worked on it, small range, the developers from the city roadway across the developed property. And that he would introduce some storm, for more improvements and regrading across this. And in order to be in the city roadway, staff also would separate the construction pieces that need to be developed. They then should have developed the easement areas on the exact area that this work will be done and then the council to approve the separate. Agreed.
So move.
I need to read that, I'm sorry. Let's go on paper copy and add the address. Yeah, I'm sorry. An ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to convey temporary construction easement to Keystone Hospitality LLC Development in the form attached hereto in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. Well, is that your other business?
My doctor played me last week, I make sure it was on the right spot. She said it was not an ordinance, it was a simple motion.
As the law says, it's a conveyance, then there's a simple statement, probably shouldn't be an ordinance, it's on the agenda, so as long as it's on the agenda.
But we need to move to second reading right now.
So you do.
I'd like to move to second reading right now.
Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
This is an ordinance authorizing the city manager and city clerk to convey a temporary construction easement to Keystone Hospitality LLC Development in the form attached hereto in the city of Warrensburg, Missouri. This is for adoption objections. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Okay. Up next, we have a discussion on cost of action on KCPN renewable energy rebate program.
We, the Energy and Sustainability Task Force, we have two members here who will play that. We've been meeting over the last recent months in discussing possible renewable energy projects within the community. We've been in discussion with MC Power to talk about some solar projects. And we had a deadline that was brought to our attention about October fifteenth. The KCPNL will be rolling out their new rebate program. It's the sense from the folks on the committee, from folks on the committee, as well as talking with KCPNL, that that is likely going to be a very popular program. And they expect the monies to go quickly for that rebate program and there to be basically a rush on October fifteen for people to submit those. So in making sure that we have all options on the table, the Energy and Sustainability Task Force would like to ask the council to grant city manager permission to explore those rebate programs and basically assist MC Power with providing some bills, recent power bills, and working with them to submit application for their rebate program to be sent in on the fifteenth, so that we can be in line for those. I think there's sixteen million statewide and eight million in our bucket on our side of the state. And so we want to kind of be able to have the option to earmark some of those funds. This does not obligate the city for anything, it's just a way to have an option to explore those rebates. We have ninety days, I believe, from whenever those rebates are granted. And then at that point, the Energy and Sustainability Task Force can explore the projects, present those to the council, so that we can go through due process, whatever that needs to be, depending on the type of project that we recommend. But it is a specific solar project and it's utilizing their rebate. And we wanted to bring that to council, so that we could get permission just to explore the application process.
I'm saying this is very preliminary. I don't know if we're talking about a million dollar project or two or five million dollar projects. Staff has not had a significant amount of time to research. I know one of the ideas presented was potentially putting a solar, for lack of a better term, farm out at the west waste water treatment facility. I haven't had any conversation with staff about location or design or cost or anything else. But this is on the agenda tonight to discuss whether it's something you want to proceed with. We were in the process, we requested records for the last year from KCPNL. We have not received that information requested back yet. But we have, we don't have one consolidated electric bill at the city, so we have forty different bills.
And that's what they're wanting. So this, this particular type of project is very similar to what a homeowner or a business owner, a single business owner would do. We have done similar rebates at Warrensburg Collision. This, it wasn't a solar project, but it was a rebate program through KCPNL. So this would be specifically tied to one, one meter or one structure is kind of what this would be. This would kind of be a micro project that would allow us to try something to see if it works. Very low, low risk and not, not a huge solar farm or anything. It would be a one project, one meter type of thing is the project that we're recommending now. There might be some delays in talking about a all-inclusive community project. And so this is another avenue much that a business or a homeowner could go through. We haven't made any decisions at the moment, but we had this deadline that kind of got slipped to us. And they said, if you have any ideas that you might be going down this route, you need to submit the application on the fifteenth, so hopefully you can get in line for those funds. And so larger projects are still on the table in discussion, but I think there's going to be a lengthy process for that. This is a small project that could be, if we choose, moving forward at a relatively faster pace. But again, this is just, we're trying to them to explore the option without any commitment on the city's behalf, no funding necessary.
Do these come up every year or every two years, or how often do you think they come up?
I'm not sure, do you guys know?
My understanding is they will recur, however, the rebate will be cut in half the next time they're offered. I think, that's my, that's what I read since our meeting.
Do you know the timeframe?
And I didn't.
Every year?
I'm sure it was better what I read, but I do not.
I was just curious, because I know staff's probably pretty busy. I mean, if they could get it pulled together before the fifteenth to get some applications, maybe.
It's literally providing you a couple bills.
And we requested that information from KCPNL, we haven't received it, that's what we're trying to get.
I know the past we've had some tennis do those thermostats with KCPNL.
Similar, right?
Just for my own clarification, do you mean that you want one meter or do you want all the city meters? Because if you're talking about all the city meters, you're upwards of potentially forty meters.
We wouldn't want that. We know that you already gathered a lot of that information on the project that you're working on, and so we would kind of leave it up to staff to discuss that.
Well, what is required for the project? You said you wanted to do a small project, so are you meaning one, one of the city's meters or are you?
At the minimum, if we wanted to explore multiple ones, wanted to cherry pick a few, we could absolutely do that. And if you needed assistance in trying to hone those in, based on the information that we have, I'm sure some members of the task force would be willing to step in to help. The project that came top of mind for us was a, we were kind of thinking of the high-energy use areas, and so we were thinking of a water plant or something, you know, the sewer plant, something that uses a lot of energy. But other buildings could be considered as well. Again, this is just exploring.
So just waiting direction for council, this is something I just pursue.
Which is, which is pretty quick.
Well, it sounds smaller than Thursday.
Right now, all it is, is getting to utility bills, which, you know, it's a lot of, it's harder for the state to do than it is for a person to do. Because you need to have the other stuff. But if that's, just in case the KCPNL get the bills, we can get them on time and say we'll take a look at it. A couple years ago, we had a discussion about the sewer plant. The cost is pretty astronomical, but I think there's a lot of projects out there that would.
I think there's some options, I think a brief meeting with Slim and Harold or some of the other folks, along with some, see what we can gather data-wise, and then involve MC Power and ask for their recommendation. I think it would be best just to get something on the books and send off, so that we have an option moving forward.
I mean, all we're doing is giving it a line for a rebate, I think those, you know, we have a project to plug it into. I think it's in the hundred. Try it.
I agree with that. I think, I know, I knew a little bit of how. I hope though that's pretty much as simple as you said it was. And that there's a good chance that we could get a possible rebate. I think it's good. I like.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion right then?
If you're going to make a motion, you're going to authorize me to sign your type of application.
To allow the city manager to explore and the city to sign application to submit, KCPNL.
Should we do it, should we do it just to the city manager or somebody else could too? We do that to one person, do that to them?
You authorize them, you would have authority to designate them.
Okay. Jacobs.
Yes.
Lund.
Yes.
Allen.
Yes.
Johnston.
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the school district fire code enforcement.
I'll start this and I'll turn it over to staff. As you're aware, Monday of last council meeting, we received an email from the finance director of the school district expressing some concerns regarding staff's application of interpretation of fire code. Basically, unless you know what happens is, so typically, we don't have a lot of jurisdiction on the school district as a separate entity, so we do not have a common practice of regularly inspecting the school buildings. But they have some funding that requires passing of a fire inspection in order for them to maintain funding. I believe it's an after-school program that they receive revenues for. And so every year, we receive a request to come in and conduct a fire inspection and compliance with that funding that they receive. My understanding, discussing with staff, is in previous years, I was usually conducted during the summer months when school is out of session in the June or July timeframe. For some reason, over the last couple of years, we haven't been requested to come in until pretty much the last minute, maybe just a few days or a few weeks before documentation was due to be submitted by the school district to whoever their funding source is. Last couple of years, we've kind of worked through that. We have found some issues when we come in and done inspection. And sometimes due to time constraints of the lateness of the request, sometimes the school district goes a little bit of panic as far as getting compliance, so they can get a passing fire inspection to submit with the materials. That wasn't the case this year. This year, however, we're going to get the requests from the school finance officer to the city council, which is the one before you're receiving. Staff want opportunity to discuss that email with the council and provide, the school district to provide any input. I don't have anybody here from the school district right now.
Gary.
The Ryan President School Award, but I'm sure I'm very.
I don't think you can for this issue. But anyway, I wanted to provide an ability. Staff has tried to work with the school district as much as we can. We're happy to come and conduct those inspections as requested. But when we do show up, we're going to enforce the code as the council approves and requires staff to do so. With that, I will turn it over to Chief Kushner and his staff to explain or answer any questions with regards to the inspection and how it's done and the findings we've had. And then staff will be happy to hear any input from council on how we like staff to proceed, given the concern expressed by the school district staff.
As the city manager said, I've verified with the state fire marshal's office and the secretary of state's office that we don't have jurisdiction in the school districts unless we're asked to come in. It's a motion that's been the last forty years, brought up in the senate and the house to change that, but it's been lobbied against, that they're individual or, you know, they can claim out. Recently, there are buildings and building remodels, they work with us, and we've gone in and provided inspection during their building. And as Harold also said, the inspection program that they do, there's a federal funding for four hundred schools at Meadow Grove and Sterling. A series of steps has to happen, they have to go through all their application stuff, and then the local, the state fire marshal's office has to approve the facility, and they won't do that until the local jurisdiction has done it. So it's kind of the stair-step thing of getting it through. What we've done in the past is we've, again, we've offered over the years to come in during summertime, we used to go in during summer all the time, go in June, July, a few weeks later, their staff calls us up, they got everything fixed, and we go on. The latest ones that have come in are, what he was explaining, the urgency is, they've been calling in 2017 in middle of August, and October, and eighteen, we tried to get them to pass on June fourteen, seven thirteen, and finally, we did on nine five, and we got the second school passed at nine twenty-eight. We've set multiple inspectors, so that, we're not trying to stop anything from happening or be too tough, it's just that there are two groups that the United States Fire Administration repeatedly puts forth as the most safe, our most necessary target, and it's the young and the old. And, you know, all we're doing is going out and enforcing the code that you, that you passed and have us do. As you read the email, they asked for some legitimacy, but I have one code to enforce, that's what you tell me to do.
What are the primary violations? I know I read it in the email from that perspective, but from yours?
We have, over the last several years, the last two code updates, been working with the school districts about what's hung in the hallways and the corridors leading to exits. And so two code cycles ago, they brought it into where unless it's, unless it's a non-exited corridor, it has to be no more than twenty percent of the area covered by it has to be no more than twenty percent of the area covered by, uh, combustible materials. Well, when that first came out, much like any of the other codes that are new, we told them, this is about twenty percent. This is about twenty percent. This is sixty percent, you know, measuring out and showing how to do it. And last, we gave them a couple of years and to work with it. And last year, we came in and, and said, okay, the twenty percent's here. You know, we kind of, you have to get it reduced. Other things that we've found, uh, most recently are doors, the, uh, exit doors that wouldn't open. They were swollen and wouldn't open. Exit lights are out, um, emergency lighting that was inoperable, um. Let me just look at this first, maybe this is the one on, uh, now, uh...
Are these intended to be a surprise inspection?
No, it's a scheduled.
It's a scheduled inspection?
Yeah, we only do it, we only come and show like the school district requests us to come to perform the inspection.
If they can't get, if they're trying to accomplish, they can't accomplish without that pass to get this money they're trying to get. What I try to gather.
Right, so you know, until it's passed, um, from what I'm being told, they don't, they don't get the funding. And it's upset them a little bit. But these inspections are easily scheduled, well in advance. We try, we've given them several options to do them at different times. One time they called us for inspection at two thirty in the afternoon. Uh, and maybe that are around the schools are about two thirty in the afternoon and understand the, what they look like.
Time you want to go there. Not the time you want to go there.
So, um, like, again, we're, we tried real hard working with them. We want to envelop them and get them in and go through the buildings and help them and be the safest place for the kids. And that's all we're trying to do.
So they call you, you come in, you know, you expect to find a few things, make the recommendations. At what point do you set a follow-up? I mean, is it, you know, can you get this together in a week and, and we'll see you then? Or are you giving them thirty days or...
Uh, we ask them when they think they can get to it. One of the schools, um, in question, uh, in seventeen, they called us back in eight days and we went back and re-inspected. It was fine. And this year, we went back in eighteen days and it was fine.
So the city's been more than willing to work with them?
Uh, will do, just not all of them. Um, and we help them, we explain stuff to them. Hey, if you move this over here, do this over here, this will be all right. Then we won't have to write down this violation and you just keep this as practice. And they go, oh, okay. But again, it takes us getting in and some of the staff that has expressed, so hey, thanks for writing this stuff down. Now maybe we can get some of this stuff fixed. And some of those teachers that were more than happy. In fact, the teachers group at, and I can't remember which school it was right now, the two in question, have asked for us during fall break to come in and talk to a group of teachers and explain some of the rules that are in place and to happen. Because, um, they said that they need to know, they need to understand so they can help do everything. So we've made arrangements with, and I think we're going to talk to like twenty-three teachers and explain a lot of stuff to them of what needs to happen and how it needs to be for these inspections so they're not as, uh, hard on it. Because if anyone in the beginning of the school year understands, you know, what they have to do to make it safe, that's great. Again, in the summertime, excuse me, for, I've been here a long, long time and we used to go in every school and spread it out, make the inspections, write the list. We've got it during breaks, you know, spring break, Christmas break. And just, you know, we try to help as much as can with them. So...
It sounds to me like they're frustrated they're wrong people. Pardon me? It sounds to me like you're frustrated they're wrong person. That's what it sounds like to me. It sounds like we're doing what we can do to help you. And I think that's, if you go and do an inspection, they're calling you eight days later and you're wanting to go back out there and look at it. I think we're moving our, you know, in, get the statement to create rules that you can't even go in there without them asking you. Then I think we're doing everything we can do.
Right, yeah, I can't go in there, um, and, and Mr. Harold will probably have to say more about this. Unless I'm called or thrown an incident, I don't have a jurisdiction on that.
My thought on the email when I read it was, the first thing I did is I looked to see who was CC'd on it. And I noticed Dr. Patrick was CC'd on it, you know. But, I mean, I'm assuming that Dr. Patrick has had no conversations with Mr. Harold on this, so...
I received the email from Andy Cole. Had no email communication from Dr. Patrick. Middle of last week, I sent, I replied the email stating that I presented on tonight's agenda. I just copied and handed the answer to Dr. Patrick. Received my response to that communication.
So I, I, I look at it this way, is, you know, the major player here is Dr. Patrick. He's not here to tell us we have a problem and he hasn't talked to Mr. Harold to say we have a problem. You just said you're the president of the school board, correct? And you aren't briefed on this problem. So to me, I think you have an employee who fired when ready, who might need to be discussed with fire already.
Is there anything that you need for, for the board or for, uh, for me to do at this point?
I think a discussion needs to happen with this employee to explain to them that the process is in place. The process has been executed to perfection. Um, sorry you didn't pass, but we're doing everything we can do to help you.
I think the bigger concern, um, in my mind, is that we have potentially unsafe buildings.
Absolutely, yeah. That, what scares me more is the state, is the state having a law in place. And that's what scares me more, is the state has a law in place and you're telling me that my fire chief can't go in there and do an inspection in?
That's, you know, taxing your citizens.
Well, I got it, but, you know...
I guess my concern would be that if, if they say that there is an issue with exits or lights or the ability to smoke in a smoky environment, it shouldn't take eight or eighteen days to get that fixed. That needs to be a top priority.
Or you're like, can't open because it's smoke. That's my number one. That's like digging it out. I'm glad you're here.
I, I will have a conversation tomorrow.
Don't you next board meeting?
Maybe a text tonight.
Don't you next board meeting? You might make an interesting point.
I know, I don't want to discourage the city not going though. I don't want them to not ever call us for any reason because of this, you know what I mean? I understand we can't do anything with the UCM schools and stuff.
That's all, since Chief Hoxley, anybody on staff's willing to go in and help and talk and work with them to get through all this, anytime.
As far as staff's concerned, we have a good working relationship with the school district. Typically, we don't have any desktops like this. And to be honest with you, this kind of caught us by surprise. I mean, we've dealt with this previous years, we've worked, we've gotten it done. So to have an email come out of the blue directly to the council was a bit of a surprise. Uh, staff is willing to schedule an ongoing schedule to, uh, to do this. So if we want to go back to doing it in June or July for the school district, so you have time to get things fixed and reinspected before the deadlines that you're required to, to adhere to, we're happy to do that. Uh, and I guess in the future, I would just prefer the professional courtesy, the upper management is given the opportunity to address these issues before communication moves up to entire council. Anyone in the public has the ability to email the council on any issue. We don't ever discourage that. But there is a process and a protocol and to skip a couple of steps, uh, can be a little frustrating sometimes.
I think the intent of this email was to submit it just before we acted on the fire code. And I think he was saying, you know, it's already tough for us to meet these, these standards. You know, I hope that you're not tightening it even further, I think was the concern. And then I think it was aired a little bit of dirt laundry, uh, in, in the process of doing it. But I think that was, uh, the timeliness of, of when it was sent and maybe just a few other things were brought up. But it's good, it's brought to our attention. Uh, we appreciate, uh, the city staff working, uh, in partnership with, uh, the schools to help them, uh, have the safest possible schools for our kids as well as, uh, to get them the, uh, the check boxes checked so that they can, so that they can submit and get the funding that, uh, for the United School Programs, so.
This is definitely one I would hit quickly though, because Sue is writing furiously and I can tell you what angry parents are like. Moving forward, I think things will get fixed quickly. I guess. Okay, next we have appearances to the council not listed on the agenda. I know I saw Chris.
I don't want to cut the line, but I think it's just me.
Thank you. Okay, Crystal?
Thank you, thank you. It's nice to see everybody this evening. In fact, um, when I followed up with Danielle and Hank, her, she participated in the opening ceremony at Berkefest. She invited us. Thank you for the opportunity to come and just share a little bit of the statistics that we had on our Berkefest event, um, this past weekend. It seems like a lifetime ago, but it's just been a few weeks or so. Um, I made just a few notes. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank so many of you, the city workers, um, some of the staff that participated. Seeing people there in all aspects, not only as helpers, but also people who are enjoying the festival and shopping and walking around with their families. It's great to see so many friendly faces. Speaking of the helpers that we had, we are very fortunate just to kind of give you, um, we work with White Air Force Base on the breakdown of Berkefest. And then we also worked with the UCM basketball team and the Young Republicans at UCM, so several different groups. With those people, we had about eighty-one between just the breakdown and setup of, of the event. And when you take their time, it's in just a few pennies under. We take the volunteer hours to the federal rate, under four thousand dollars, like we empower hours. So it was really impressive. And I think with having the perspective of we're regional and Knobnoxer came in to help us and the school was there to help us. And we had local people and board members all there working together. It's truly a community event. And I think that was reflected in the helpers that we had and the participation itself. This year was much milder than last year. I don't know if anybody remembers the year before, but I remember setting up tents as a volunteer. It was a hundred and five degrees on Thursday, uh, in the September. It was crazy hot. So this year felt more ball and festival light and I think we saw that too. Friday night, I think the cold snap, um, caught a few people off guard. Saturday, there were workers prepared, I saw a lot of jackets and layers and that sort of thing. But everyone I saw was walking around smiling. A lot of people asked me, how's Berkefest going? And I said, well, really, you're a better judge of that. If you're having a good time and enjoying it, that means we've done our job. And they really, uh, reflected that in their comments. With vendors and food trucks, we had over sixty-four between the two types of groups. The city had decided not to do commercial. Um, so what you saw was actually all local artisans, crafts that were handmade from our area. I did recruit a few. I was proud to say that we had a food truck all the way from Nebraska. I'm not personally responsible for them, but they were delicious and it was extra greasy, but they were good. But, um, one of the things that I, I met a man out at Powell Gardens, Third Barbers Market that they hosted this summer, who's actually from Knobnoxer, we got to talk. He came with his woodworking items, just absolutely gorgeous. So it was great to see him there and he kind of shopped us a little bit to see if it might be something with his Barbers Market or a future Berkefest, those sorts of things. Um, I met a lady at Vingham Wagner State when I was there at a festival one day. And she actually came in, brought her goods, sold out of six different items, so she was super happy. Plus, she also made connection with one of our stores, it's new downtown, Soul Song. Put them side by side, um, on purpose. And they're talking about actually carrying some of her items. So we're getting that recruitment from different areas and I think that's really positive. So those were really nice to see. Plus, those people both, one, she was super excited, um, and wanted to come back and people are already planning for two thousand nineteen to return. And, um, they kind of know what to expect now, so they can do more. So that's really positive as well. Our downtown businesses that are here twenty-four seven, um, also said they noticed a lot of people were coming in. People were shopping, doing make-in-takes outside, like in Austin Blossoms, and then going into the store and purchasing. So it was nice to see that commerce and those tax dollars there as well. Um, we had ten bands at, at the Beer Garden. Also, our Beer Garden was really popular with games and we had cornhole, we had fourteen teams each night. Um, some of our local police warriors were with the winners there, so that was nice to see. We didn't have any incidents, um, to report for the Beer Garden, no accidents, no, um, disturbances. Also, EMA, when we did our wrap-up meeting, they were very complimentary that we had a plan. We're actually working for next year too, to do a digital mapping that will help us with vendor placement, also some more security, um, child, lost child station, that sort of thing. So we're building each year, trying to improve. We're already looking at two thousand nineteen possibilities, some new things, new, um, points of interest, how to make it more exciting. We're always open to suggestions, so if anybody has any of those, please feel free to email me, stop me any time. I'll put it on the, the committee's agenda and we'll see what we can do to address it. Do you think they have any questions or comments or... I kind of rattled a lot, so...
Is there any way to track approximately how many people may have come out for Berkefest?
You know, we always estimate about five thousand. Um, with, you know, with the kids area being free, I know there was a lot of coming and going there. Um, we are currently working on some numbers. We haven't gotten all of our invoices in, you know, the high-low, that sort of thing. Um, with the Beer Garden, we can kind of track by that, so I think that would be lots of exact numbers.
So one of the comments that I heard frequently was some frustration by some of the public that they didn't like all the entertainment being in the Beer Garden, because everyone likes to be in a Beer Garden environment.
Right.
And so they don't like having to go into that environment to watch a grandkid or something like that. So that might be something to consider for the future.
That's actually perfect, because we actually have had two different discussions. One was at the rep meeting and one was just the other day someone stopped me. And they said, you know, um, even though not everybody in the Beer Garden is necessarily drinking, some people want more of the family atmosphere or, you know, to know that the kids can just kind of run around and not get into something they're not supposed to. So we're already looking at a different configuration so that the bands would be available from both sides. And we can still maintain that safe perimeter for the, the open container and for family entertainment. So we're already investigating that truly.
Or now, we had a big community function and we had a stage set in an angle where you're sent to. So one street had the Beer Garden and the other street didn't. And that allowed viewing from both sides. So you had those that wanted to be in the Beer Garden and you could restrict that on one street and, you know, but both streets could view.
Right. I think there also might be a better utilization of the Casey P and L drops too, as we demand on how to place it. So that would be a cost savings as well. So that's one.
Oh, my grandson was upset because there wasn't very many bouncy houses. There was...
You know, um, we talked about actually adding, because there's that intermittent need too. They were more, it seemed like, for smaller, um, First Baptist Church, no complaints about them at all. They totally spearheaded that and they did a great job. So could any person who can stand strong for two days in a bounce house as a volunteer is, is hero in my opinion. But, um, here we are, we're looking at maybe doing some intermittent, something that's not quite for the toddlers, because you don't want a twelve-year-old bouncing around with a two-year-old, you know, but some intermittent type stages, maybe even some different activities. And we're reaching out to some different organizations as well to bring that in. FFA, again, they can raise your pressure and warrant for bringing those kids in to do some activities, some old-fashioned games and things to keep kids busy. It was nice, it was all free this year too. That helps families, I think.
I wonder if there could, um, if you could reach out to Higginsville? Their country fair always has really good, like even our thirteen-year-olds are interested because they'll like the log thing that rotates and you have to jump over it.
Oh, kind of like that.
But like inflatable, yeah. Yeah, their mates were just slightly older, but like even your grandson would have been able to do it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check it out, I'll check it out.
I brought my seven and eleven-year-old down, uh, we didn't stay very long. It was a little different compared to last year or the years before.
Need a bigger size?
Need a little bigger size for, uh, the kids. I mean, I agree with Harold, but, uh, but, uh, it was a little more towards the Beer Garden than the craft area, which craft area was nice, but my kids just weren't as interested.
And I know that I put this out to a few people just, just touching water, because I, I know that several small towns around us use, um, different carnival-type things. Is that something that the council has an interest in?
Personally, I didn't, I didn't want to see rides since the first time they did this, but, you know...
And not saying that it was going to happen, but I mean, I would like to kind of, because that also is one thing we have to start praying today.
Why, you didn't think if you got a fair, so you got fourteen, fifteen, sixteen-year-olds that will come? And that's a, and that's a, and that's a... And maybe for fifteen and sixteen-year-olds to do. The participation, the participation at Knobnoxer Fair is incredible for the amount of people who actually live in Knobnoxer. I go, we go every year because of the rides, so...
Okay, so that is something to draw. We also have Parents Weekend working with us too, so I think we'll even have a bigger audience next year than what we had this year.
One thing value of the rides to downtown area, you have to be sure that just, uh, we're the place because of where it's powered.
Right.
Sure.
Right.
Holden Street.
I think that would actually help take us down towards Pine More too. Again, like I've heard that it has been in past years. Again, I'm a new kid, so I'm hearing the history, trying to piece it all together and hopefully make it grow each year.
This is my third year requesting ride, so I look forward to it.
I've been requesting rides.
Or you got games for it too, and I don't know.
I'm probably three or four...
There's a lot of opportunities and I think we just need to maybe look at some of the logistics and the layout and that could... And I think we just need to maybe look at some of the logistics and the layout and that could actually increase what we're doing. Just as a sign now, I, like I said, this actually gave me a break from my desk. I am getting ready for our boardwork session tomorrow. I know that contracts, I got the email today that it's the twenty-second. Just to kind of touch and see if there's any inclination from the council. And I know one of the points of our contract that was vague was events, how many that you guys would like us to kind of strive to achieve. Is there any inclination to what that number would be? Because we are meeting tomorrow to discuss 2019, just if it's even a scope, just an idea. Doesn't have to be set in concrete, but something to put out there.
One of my recommendations to the council is the contract is vague, the United States.
Current events, possibly.
There was four events. The Main Street was coordinating and organizing in that timeframe. And the council gave the directive to Main Street to develop two more additional events. Problem the staff has now is with turnover stuff, we don't know what the first original four will work. So we have no way to really know whether Main Street is complying with the contract or not. And so our recommendation would be to actually define specifically those key events that you expect Main Street to coordinate, that we're providing funding for and paying for an events coordinator to do. And then if you want to leave too vague and open, that's fine. But at least those core ones, we need to have identified specifically in the contract and using currently.
I believe, and I agree completely. I know that when we had that meeting, we've kind of discussed that it, the way it reads is roughly current events and two additional. And so again, with my, our turnover with us and then also turnover with you, it wasn't specifically stated like four events plus two or four total, six to you, that sort of thing. And so that's why I said, can we narrow that down? So I make sure, I'm meeting the requirements that you all have and fulfilling our contract. We don't want to be shy or, you know, that sort of thing. But we also, I know that we've really talked about focusing on and making what we have better, keeping the tradition and growing it. I think that's our main goal, is to do the best that we can, but more creative. And sometimes when you have fifty events, it's not as good as having twenty events because you spread a little more thin. And so that's why we were seeking out to you all, because there was just kind of a rough number. It sounds like if they were doing four, they were probably doing one a quarter kind of thing.
I don't know what they would have done the first quarter, because I kind of wrote down the ones that I've already talked about.
Don't want to get too far, because we are on the night and it isn't officially on the agenda.
Right, right. And I'm sorry, I know I was just kind of trying to get an idea.
But if you can send an email of what you consider the key events, that you consider Main Streets, that you consider included as part of that contract as far as council's expectation, and I can convey that to Crystal. And we can also get that outlined specifically in the contract.
And I apologize. I know it's not on the agenda. And like I said, I just kind of wanted to touch base and see, since we are meeting and looking at the 2019 calendar year, there's just an idea. So I can tell them, hey, the city is looking about this. Let's work with that number and just kind of gauge what we can do.
Yeah. So I don't know what I'm allowed, what we're allowed to say.
This portion of your agenda is for receiving information from the public, not for deliberations or discussion by the council.
If we can put this on future agenda?
That, or you can send me an email one-on-one of what you think and I can consolidate that and then.
That would be, that'd be.
I think the next council agenda, we have approval of all the contracts. So that'll be on the agenda next time and then you can, we'll have it in draft form in fact for your approval.
And that is a twenty-second.
We can change it at that time.
Perfect. All right, well, I'm going to go back to my office. You guys have a great night. Thank you again. I'll see you all.
Next, we have mayoral appointments to boards and commissioners. I would like to appoint Marcy Bryant to be Parks and Recreation Board.
Number G F. Jacob?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Yes. Disputing matters for the mayor and for the city council.
I had sent you all an email and we need to discuss a meeting about the first meeting in November, which is also Veterans Day. And when, just now, when you all wanted to meet, did you want to meet that day? Would you meet the following day? Would you meet? Anyway, as long as we notify the public that there's a change.
Do you foresee a lot on the agenda? Because in the past, we haven't always.
Well, the business of council does. I mean, typically in the past with the Thanksgiving holiday, we typically have scheduled one council meeting or a mock and mock reminder. Something critical to move forward. So staff, we sheet the items in the month of November, so we want to meet. Question is, if that's what council would like to do. So you have several options. One is, as the state books say, you could leave the meeting as originally scheduled on Monday. You can also observe quality of city staff who will be here for the council meeting, if that's the council's desires. You could do Tuesday night, the night after. You could do the Monday, the following Monday. So we'd meet the third Monday and that would be, could be the one meeting of the month. Or you could meet the third Monday and the fourth Monday, as we're going to schedule. That is at the low of the council. Staff is flexible. We can make it work with one meeting, if that's what you would like.
Personally, I would say if we wanted to move it to the third Monday, because Tuesdays are a little.
I mean, the nineteenth is time of me.
It is with everybody else?
Everybody now. We go to Thanksgiving. Monday after Thanksgiving.
That's the Monday.
That's Monday. Oh, that's Monday before Thanksgiving, like two Mondays. I was like, all right.
Normally, we would have it on the twelfth, because that's the special.
Or we have the twenty-sixth.
So we could move it to the nineteenth and then later that week would be Thanksgiving. But then we could not have one on the twenty-sixth.
Right, right.
I kind of hate for us to leave it, to wait until the end of the month. That's a pretty long time.
Yeah, nineteen then. Is that okay?
Yeah, we've been able to make it to the nineteenth. That's not a problem. I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave until one today for Thanksgiving.
Good.
Nineteenth, and that's the only meeting for November?
That's your regularly scheduled meeting by ordinance. You need to have a motion to move that one. So I moved, I motioned to move the meeting to from the twelfth to the nineteenth.
Jacob?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
So just look at December for discussing this. Twenty-four of December is Christmas Eve and that was supposed to be her. But I guess maybe we can have one.
There again, I'm a little tired of these two. Yeah, we try to add one. All right, thank you.
Okay, and city managers.
Just a couple of things briefly. I will be out of the office quite a bit over the next couple of weeks. Meet tomorrow to head with Wyman Area Leadership Council with the Pentagon, talk about regional issues and concern, the general relationships with regards to Wyman Air Force Base and its future. And then next week, staff and a couple of council members will be headed to Chicago for the annual ICSC Deal Making Conference. So we're looking forward to that. We had a preparation meeting this morning and hoping, we have a few appointments set up in advance to meet with some representatives. The last item I would like to discuss, obviously I wasn't at the last council meeting. We've been discussing the fire sprinkler issue for some time. I respect the decision of the council. I know it was a tough decision, not an easy one, and I'm definitely not asking for the council to reconsider that decision anyway. But some things came to my attention that I find somewhat disappointing with regards to the public. That when I hear of council members getting threats in their mailbox or staff comes out the day after and has a message scrolled on their windshield regarding the matter, I find that highly disappointing of our public. I've enjoyed my time here in Warrensburg and I have a deep respect for a lot of the citizens in Warrensburg. And so that's, that's a disappointing reaction in my book. And I consider Warrensburg to be much better than that. Staff is respectful of the decision and the process. The council went through that and we're happy to live with that. So to have it be made that personal and dealt with in that way is disappointing in my book for a reaction from our citizens of Warrensburg. In a culture and a community that we're trying to teach anti-bullying for our kids and our schools and those types of things, to have adults act in that way is a wrong example to set for our children and our younger generations of our community. And I hope in the future that behavior is not repeated. Because I find that highly disappointing, offensive and inappropriate. Anyway, that's all I have for seeing Andrew's report. See you.
Director, findings?
Any package you have, what potentially is a, they get unedited year-end snapshots. We ended the year on a good note with revenues. Our tax and revenues are up about six point nine three percent. But if we took last year and this year kind of average amount, if we're on a state curve, there still is some concern with last year's numbers that, that, though we deflated some, and then this year's numbers are inflated a little bit. But that's about it. We had the auditors in the building today. Beginning of the audit, they went out to do things and they'll be back on the week of the twelfth to do the full audit.
Well, I know most of us are thinking about Chicago show, but it's time to start planning for the Red River States Deal Making Conference in January. Which I was previously called the Texas Deal Making, but they made it the Red River States. So I guess bringing Oklahoma along and keeping that line to be alive. So that show is January ninth through eleventh. And you have budgeted to have a booth and a presence at that one. It'd be a little smaller than the booth in Chicago. And so I want to get those dates in front of you so we can start to identify the council person that would go to that conference. So January ninth through eleventh, it's a whole work and it's the same type of deal. It's a day and a half show with some setup time. That's all I have.
I unfortunately forgot to bring my sheet to tell you the dates for ribbon cutting are two projects. When is October fifteenth, ten AM? That will be the Veterans Road Phase Four ribbon cutting. The plan is to do a dog walk with the mayor afterwards. We'll have some impressions there, maybe some dog walks. At ten AM, October fifteenth. And then we'll do a ribbon cutting for downtown Phase Four. The Holden Street project will be on October thirty-first at three thirty PM. That's intended to be done right before the annual trick-or-treat downtown. So people can come and do ribbon cutting and head downtown and go trick-or-treating. And then November twenty-eighth at three PM. It was doing good up until that point. By November twenty-eighth, three PM. That's scheduled in conjunction with an early school release. But the mayor will have some local youth helping her and staff decorate the mayor's Christmas tree in preparation for the holiday season kickoff with Dickens later that week. But that'll be press releases coming out on those here in the very near future as well.
If anybody doesn't have a dog, you can use mine. Got two.
Yeah, I've got a couple. The sellers got plenty. I'm sure we can get them out too. Thanks, Harold. That's all I have.
Thanks for getting that road open.
Have you tried?
I tried to port it open. Nothing additional?
On Wednesday, we are hosting a Community Build Day at the Quist of Playground from three to five. So we would encourage you to sign up if you are wanting to come so that we have enough equipment for everyone. And then if you have any questions, let me know, but we are looking forward to hosting that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we make every attempt to take care of all our employees all year round. However, October seems to be a month that we have quite a few activities going on to look after them. So flu shots, this flu season. So we do have flu shots that they can sign up through, get the forms, run through the insurance. And we do that every year in October. This year until October twenty-sixth. As well as, you know, last year, we had open enrollment so that we moved to, from fiscal year to the calendar year. So we had a three-month period. We moved things to the January one. So we're now on a regular calendar year schedule, but we have an open enrollment on the seventeenth and eighteenth for the 2019 benefits year. I just wanted to let you know those items are in progress.
I suppose enough. Been busy. A lot of car alarms. Please, everyone lock your cars, please. Other than that, so.
Talking about cars, I was at St. Louis Hospital today and there was a guy. I caught him in somebody's car. I asked him if it was his. He said, what do you mean? So I went back and I guess he had gone through three or four of the cars and went, you know, going through. It was like the underground parking at St. Louis Hospital in the Plaza. And you can lock your cars because they were alone.
Good for you. We're going to catch them out. We got the eyes on them.
I went and said to them, they got him on video. He goes through at least four cars. But hadn't got them, everything would have been lost.
They were brave last night. They hit up too many cars. They.
Twenty-one is the reports that we have.
Yeah, and there's people I know that haven't even reported it. They just said, nah, nothing. All right, go to close.
All right, let's see here. Go to close part of this meeting, we still have the section six, six point one zero, point zero two one. They revised as actions related to one, legal action causes of action or litigation involving the city and in confidential or privileged communication between the city and its representatives and its attorneys. Two, leasing purchases or sale of real estate with public knowledge might adversely affect the amount paid in the transaction. Three, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting in particular employees at public government body where personnel information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Twelve, documents of any documents or any documents related to the negotiation contracts until a contract is executed and all proposals are rejected. Thirteen, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment.
Jacob?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.